Mainly immigrant and low-income communities, and forming relationships with residents there to encourage them to take part.
This helps the decision-makers at the Census Bureau to engage those community partners.
But one thing hackers have not figured out yet is how to tackle President Trump's new rule. Trump wants the 2020 census to ask if respondents are American citizens. This might discourage families fearful of deportation from taking part. Hackers and elected leaders have two years to figure out this problem. At the L.A. City Library, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
California is also suing the Trump administration in hopes of blocking the citizenship question on the 2020 census. The tally takes place every 10 years. Well, it'll be the first cable-stayed bridge constructed in the city of Los Angeles to connect two parts of the L.A. River. Rasha Goel has more on this connection that will bring people closer to nature.
Community members and officials are excited to finally see a bridge built over the Los Angeles River that will connect Atwater Village on the river's eastern bank to Griffith Park on its western bank. The North Atwater Multimodal Bridge will include two separate decks, one for pedestrians and cyclists, and the other for equestrians.
You'll be able to take a horse from one side of the stables to the east side of the river. May seem like a short distance, but for many people, it has been a huge gulf for far too long. You'll be able to cross Atwater Bridge into Griffith Park and disconnect from city life for a moment, and to feel what we are connected to, Los Angeles' natural wonders.
The 300-foot-long bridge will help link the equestrian stables in Atwater Village to 56 miles of horse trails in Griffith Park. This is intended to improve the area for equestrian safety, who must ford the river in order to cross it.
We're gonna put in 30 steel piles, four foot in diameter, that will go down 40 feet in the ground. There's no way this thing is coming down. And 300,000 pounds of steel. If you ever wanted to buy steel, this would be the time right now.
The bridge has been in the works since 1998. Various funding plans fell through as the estimated cost for the bridge kept rising. Now, thanks to a public-private partnership and a $4.75 million donation from philanthropist Morton LeCretz, construction of the bridge is moving full speed ahead.
The bridge, the first to connect the east side with the Los Angeles River, is a crucial step in building that access, and in building the Los Angeles that understands the interconnectedness of our parks to our health, our happiness, and to our communities.
The bridge is expected to be completed by late 2019. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
The new bridge will achieve goals set in the L.A. River Revitalization Master Plan, a blueprint to restore the ecosystem of the river while expanding the parks around it along with increasing public access. Google is partnering with L.A. for a series of web training seminars. As Gil Reyes reports, the sessions are expected to streamline city services through Google Apps.
L.A. City workers get acquainted with Google Suite, that's updated software on their office PCs, making work faster and easier if they know how to use it.
A lot of new features that hang out that you can utilize within an organization, very beneficial.
Jimmy Chang from the city's Information Technology Agency. He and colleagues are in training, computer training through Google's Traveling Roadshow.
This is just open for city employees and the usage of Google Apps in the city. We don't have to go out and buy Microsoft Office products because all of that is given in your Google Apps instance. You have that at your fingertips. You have a word processor, you have a Sheet, you have a presentation product, and calendar. You have a lot more things than I think a lot of people know. They normally just use it to send emails.
Google's Training Roadshows have made stops nationwide to help teachers, companies, and web developers. But this stop in Los Angeles is Google Roadshows' first specifically to help a municipal agency. The city's ITA provides computer support, public safety communications, and a range of other high-tech services.
The city of Los Angeles are active Gmail users. We have over 20,000 employees who use Google products here. Our ability to improve the way we use our calendars, the way we send our emails, the way we build sites or forums and use Google Drive make us that much more effective at the city of Los Angeles.
At City Hall in downtown, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
And for L.A. City workers who missed the seminar, no worries. More training days are scheduled in the downtown area soon. The Cuban-American Music Festival delivered "The Salsa" to downtown. It also brought cigars, a twist on vegan food, and some car culture history. And as Gil Reyes reports, U.S. veterans proud of their Caribbean roots.
Cuban superstar Pedro Calvo from the legendary group Los Van Van headlined downtown's Cuban-American Music Festival.
Super happy. Everyone's super cheerful, dancing, having a good time.
And we love salsa.
The celebration, in its second year, was co-organized by United States Army Colonel, Battalion Commander, and dentist Diana Zachell.
My parents are immigrants to this country. They were proud Americans, and they're proud from their country where they came from. So I wanted to honor my mother, who passed away, about her culture and how rich it was, and with the music and the dancing and the food.
Some 42,000 Cuban-Americans reside here in Los Angeles County, but this is the only music and arts festival dedicated solely to that community. But make no mistake about it, this event isn't just for Cuban-Americans, it's for everybody that resides in Los Angeles.
I love it. Outstanding. With a cigar in my hand.
There were even cigar-making classes. On hand, shop owner Raul Rayner. He broke a Guinness record last year by rolling the world's longest stogie, 332 feet. That's longer than a football field. So what are the current embargo rules for Cuban cigars, arguably the best in the world?
So you can go to Cuba and, you know, purchase cigars and bring them back and smoke on personal consumption, not a problem. It's not considered contraband. However, commercial reasons, you can't really sell them.
But what we could sell were Cuban-style churros.
We make different toppings, like the coconut rum sauce one. It's the coquito one, so it's infused with rum for the Cuban festival.
Also classic Cuban fare, like papas fritas, but with vegan chili.
We basically have just taken traditional Cuban recipes, and we've just adapted them. So I make my sofrito, all my seasonings, all of my sauces are the same recipes my grandmother would use. The only thing we've changed is the meat.
Photojournalist Parvez showed us how Cuba's cars remain frozen in time since the U.S. Trade Embargo. Cuba's newest American cars are from the 1950s and can only be found in big cities like Havana.
But the further you go away from Havana, the cars get older, to the point where cars disappear. So for example, if you go to Trinidad, Trinidad is eight hours away. In Trinidad, cars start disappearing, or cars are into 1920s cars. And if you keep on going further away, cars disappear, and then it's horse and carriage.
L.A. City Controller Ron Galperin honored event promoters Yambu Productions and La Plaza de Cultura ERTs.
And who doesn't love Cuban culture? And Los Angeles, which has the second-biggest population of Cubans outside of Cuba and outside of Miami. What a great testament to the city.
The city of angels where all cultures are celebrated. In downtown Los Angeles, I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
And the beat goes on as organizers are busy planning their "Festival of the Americas" concert, celebrating all Latin cultures. That festival will take place in August. How prepared are Angelenos when it comes to fire safety? Rasha Goel has more on how city leaders are ensuring residents are prepared.
That smoke alarm is a small investment that potentially could save a life. But officials say you'd be surprised by the number of residents who don't have an active smoke alarm.
Research shows that almost a quarter million people in the city of Los Angeles do not have working smoke alarms in their homes. And it's so important to get into those homes and find out what they need.
And that's why Councilwoman Monica Rodriguez and officials from the Los Angeles Fire Department and My Safe L.A., an organization promoting fire and life safety, are emphasizing the importance of public safety.
We are going door-to-door and block-by-block to start connecting with our residents, to make sure that they're aware of all of the services that we are here to provide, and making sure that they are safe in the face of a number of the emergencies that we could be confronted with.
Since 2014, My Safe L.A. has installed more than 35,000 smoke alarms in homes all over the city of L.A. That has led to a 40% reduction in residential fire fatalities.
Ten years leading up to 2014, on average, 21 people a year died at fires in Los Angeles. And during the last four years, we've seen that come down to 12. And that's a really terrific step. We'd like to see it down to eight a year, and then down to zero at some point in time.
So the message here: Make sure your smoke alarms and carbon monoxide detectors are working.
We all know what happened in the Creek Fire. We know what happened in the Latuna Fire. Those were tragic to our community, but I still believe the emergency preparedness that all these partners demonstrated facilitated greater public safety.
And it all begins in your home. I'm Rasha Goel for L.A. This Week.
Fighting, fists of fury, join forces in support of traditional Chinese martial arts. Gil Reyes tells us why from L.A.'s Chinatown.
You could say they're fighting to keep an ancient art form relevant.
Sifu masters, grandmasters of at least 40 different styles. And it's just an absolute miracle for all these fighters to be in the same room so peacefully.
They're actually fighting together to keep Kung-Fu alive and kicking and punching in Southern California. This dinner in L.A.'s Chinatown awards pioneers in the Chinese martial arts community and raises money to help keep their schools operating. That's the mission of the Traditional Chinese Martial Arts Federation of Los Angeles, the group formed last year.
In the spirit of friendship, the unity, and the respect, that's our vision statement.
Well, a fight like this is helping to hold us together. The MMA became very popular. We need something to help our survival, because what's happening right now, we're getting overcome by some of the sport arts, some of the wushu arts even out of China. And what we're trying to do is carry the ancient art.
Not just for self-defense, but for good, heart-pumping exercise, too. L.A. City Councilman David Rue says he's trained.
The entire city council and the mayor joined in your celebration, and we hope this event only gets larger and larger every single year.
Keeping the fighting spirit alive in L.A.'s Chinatown. I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
And that was the Federation's second annual fundraiser. More money is coming in to help fix our roads. Some middle-school kids make school safety a priority, and a local park gets some much-needed upgrades thanks to the community. All this in City Beat.
Mayor Eric Garcetti gathered with transportation leaders at Union Station to highlight more than $1.2 billion in funds awarded to Southern California transportation projects. The funds will go towards repairing California's crumbling transportation infrastructure. Funding will support highway and road maintenance, increased public transit, and construction of local priority transportation projects.
I want to see my daughter. I want to see my wife. I don't want to be stuck in traffic. All of us have a place to be, and we're driving over potholed roads, crumbling bridges. We don't have enough transit options. SB 1 shows a way forward.
In collaboration with State Farm, the mayor's Vision Zero, and Los Angeles Unified School District, Los Angeles Rams punter Johnny Hecker and Rams cheerleaders surprised students at Columbus Middle School to announce the school is the winner of the Street Safety Hero Pledge Contest, after its students submitted the highest share, 86%, of pledges to be street safety heroes as part of the Safe Routes to School program. Students take the pledge to be a safe pedestrian and remind family and friends who drive to be aware of people walking and biking on our streets. Councilman Jose Huizar and community members gathered to unveil $700,000 worth of improvements to San Pasqual Park. Communities suggested improvements include a new playground, outdoor fitness area, a basketball court, ADA walkways, and a refurbished parking lot. Phase two of the project will add new restrooms. Councilmember Huizar's office held five community meetings with the San Pasqual Neighborhood Watch to discuss park safety and instituted the improvements to make the space more active.
It only happened because the community is active, involved, and engaged.
The summer vacation season began with a patriotic salute to fallen service members. Gil Reyes has more from Memorial Day commemorations on the east side and in Canoga Park.
Within L.A. City, few communities have as much small-town flavor as Canoga Park. And it's here in Canoga Park where a wreath dedication for fallen service members takes place every Memorial Day.
It's a very patriotic part of Los Angeles, part of this country. And you'll see it. You'll see it in people lining the streets and cheering on, you know, all the floats that go by.
What follows is Canoga Park's Memorial Day Parade. Service members, flag waivers, and local leaders make their way down Sherman Way for the biggest Memorial Day procession in California. Tens of thousands come to honor military men and women who died while serving.
Because a lot of them are forgotten. A lot of people were forgotten and still are forgotten.
Because they gave up their life to give us freedom. And I think that's an awesome thing.
It's also an opportunity to say thank you to those who are alive, who are veterans, who need our help, so many of which are living on the streets of Los Angeles. And we have an obligation, in the memory of all those who have fallen, to make sure that we take care of all of our vets.
Over on L.A.'s east side, people honor the dead at El Sereno Memorial Monument. For decades, northeast L.A. has sent many of its young residents to war. Many of them did not make it home. For northeast councilman and first-generation American Jose Huizar, it's a time to honor those who died for freedoms many of us take for granted.
Not all people in the world can have freedom of religion, freedom of speech, freedom to congregate, and freedoms to march and protest against our own government. And the opportunities that we have in this country are tremendous.
Things to remember while enjoying summer vacation with friends and family. I'm Gil Reyes for L.A. This Week.
Other commemorations took place at the L.A. National Cemetery in Westwood, the World War II Memorial in Boyle Heights, Forest Lawn Cemetery in Hollywood, and at the L.A. Coliseum. Well, join Councilmember Paul Krikorian for a hike and get a free tree. Get inspired with a tour of some ranch-style homes from the '40s. And come out for a block party and go home with a new four-legged family member. All this in this week's Things to Do. Nature is calling. Join Councilmember Paul Krikorian, Assemblymember Nazarian, and Tree People for a Saturday morning hike in beautiful Coldwater Canyon Park. The first 50 people who show up will also get a free tree. It all takes place Saturday, June 9, at 9:00 a.m. at Coldwater Canyon Park, located at 12601 Mohallen Drive in Beverly Hills. To RSVP, visit paulkrikorian.org/trepeoplehike. Author Chris Lecather will take attendees on a stroll in Valley Glen of a cluster of special ranch-style homes built by William Melanthan in the 1940s, '50s, and '60s. His singular brand of cozy, charming homes, which became known as the Melanthan Birdhouse Ranch Home, so-called because they featured a cupola, or dove-coat, built prominently into the roof. As a special treat, one of the homeowners will open up their home for a tour. Light snacks and beverages will be offered. Water will be provided to all attendees. Make sure to wear walking shoes, sunscreen, and bring a hat in case it's hot. The tour takes place Saturday, June 9, from 10:00 a.m. to 12:00 noon at the corner of Addison and Ethel in Sherman Oaks. Whether you have two legs or four furry ones, this promises to be fun for all at the second annual Gloselle Bark Community Block Party and Pet Rescue Adoption, sponsored in part by CD1 Councilmember Gil Sadio. There'll be plenty of fun family festivities, including a watermelon eating contest, free professional family pet photos, free microchipping, free spay-neuter vouchers, low-cost vaccines, a doggy fashion show, human barking contests, live performances, and more. You could also enjoy live entertainment, local vendors, and food trucks. A block party takes place Saturday, June 9, from 12:00 to 3:00 p.m. at Gloselle Park, located at 3750 Verdugo Road. For more, visit glosellebark.com. And that's a look at some things to do. Well, that's going to do it for this edition. I'm Yana Kane from all of us here at L.A. This Week. Thanks for joining us. A reminder that you can catch us online at lacityview.org. You can also follow and like us on Facebook. We'll see you back here next week for more of L.A. This Week.
Birthdays, baby showers, graduations, or anniversaries. Holidays like Cinco de Mayo? There are lots of fun excuses to throw a big party. But what do you do with all the stuff once the guests have gone home? Well, as long as they're clean and dry, you can recycle aluminum cans. Items like candy wrappers cannot be recycled. They need to go in your black bin. Party decorations? Well, consider reusing them. Pizza, doughnut boxes, and other pastry boxes can be recycled only if they're clean. If they are dirty and greasy, please throw them in your black bin. For more information, visit recycler.com.
Hi, I'm Jen Mahoney in Studio City. You're watching LA City View Channel 35, where you can get the best in culture and arts. It's our city, it's our channel.
Hey, just go!
Everybody would please, uh, please take their seats. If everybody would please take their seats. Today is Wednesday, June 6th. Want to welcome you to City Hall, to this Los Angeles City Council. This council meets every Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday. The public is welcome. Mr. Clerk, we do have a quorum. Would you call the roll?
Blue Man Field, Bonham Buscino, Sodio, Anger, Harris, Dawson, Weesar, Kurek, Corian, Martinez, Farrell, Price, Rodriguez, Rue, West, and 12 members present in a quorum. Mr. President.
First order of business. Weesar moves, correct. Seconds, next.
Commendatory resolutions for approval.
Rodriguez moves, Martinez seconds, next.
Mr. President, item one is an item noted for public hearing. And for that item, the city clerk reports that the tabulated value of the opposing ballots cast does not exceed the tabulated value of the supporting ballots. A majority protest is not found to exist, and the proposed establishment may be authorized by council at this time.
Okay, thank you. Do we have cards?
Yes, sir, we do.
Okay, continue going through the agenda.
Items two through five are items which public hearings have been held. Committee reports for items two through five have been posted and distributed and are now before council for consideration.
Okay, I don't see any specials, so why don't we vote on those items? Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
12 eyes.
And, Mr. President, there's been requests to send items three and four forthwith.
So ordered, continue.
Very good, sir. Items six through 13 are items which public hearings have not been held. 10 votes are required for consideration.
Okay, without objection, those items are now before this body. Do you have cards on these items?
Yes, sir, cards on all items.
Then continue.
Item 14 is an item scheduled for closed session. Would you like to hold it on the desk?
At this point, I think we should until I have a conversation with one of our members. So continue.
Very good, sir. That takes council back to presentations. Items called special or general public comment for items not on council's agenda.
Okay, I want to recognize Mr. Price for an introduction.
Thank you, Mr. President. Members, as you know, the Sister City program has been an important element in our civic Today, in fact, we have 25 Sister City relationships with cities around the world encouraging trade, business, the arts, education. Today, we recognize one of our city's longest Sister City relationships with the city of Lusaka, Zambia, in East Africa. This relationship was established almost 50 years ago, under the leadership of Tom Today, we're pleased to welcome the 16th ambassador to the Republic of Zambia to the United States. He's here from Washington, DC, celebrating with us on this 50th anniversary. Also joining with us today is the honorary counsel for Zambia, Mr. Robert Senchenga. But let me just give the ambassador a chance to say a few words. Before becoming appointed ambassador, he served as a member of the parliament, serving as a cabinet minister of Home Affairs before being appointed as the Minister of Justice by the president. He spent most of his life as an academic, teaching at the University of Zambia since 1981, where he served as the dean of the law school. So please join me in welcoming Ambassador Ngosa Simba Yacola.
Thank you very much. Thank you, Mr. President. I'm deeply humbled for this invitation to address the City Council of Los Angeles. And I bring new greetings from the people of the Republic of Zambia. Last night, in the Tom Bradley Tower, we commemorated 50 years of friendship between the city of Lusaka, that's the capital of Zambia, and Los Angeles. Councilman Karen Price facilitated the use of that historic and prestigious venue. I was humbled, and I want to thank him for that gesture and support for Zambia. During my tour of duty as ambassador of the Republic of Zambia to the United States, I will do my utmost to further enhance the warm bilateral relations that exist between Zambia and the United States, and in particular with the city of Los Angeles and the city of Lusaka. I know you have a long agenda, I don't want to take up much of your time. I just want to say how humbled I am to be in this historic city of Los Angeles. It's my first time to be here. Although I lived in the United States as a student in the Midwest, where I did, I studied law at the University of Wisconsin in Madison. So humbled to be in your beautiful city. Thank you so much.
We're so happy to have you. Let's give him another round of applause.
Thank you, Ambassador. And on behalf of the 4 million citizens in the city of Los Angeles and the 15 members on this council, we'd like to present you with a certificate of welcome.
Okay, so sergeants, if you could clear the center aisle. I'm gonna start off with a little bit of general public comment. I'm gonna ask Chad and JT to come forward. It has been a while since we have seen you. Go ahead.
What up, council? My name is Chad Kroger. I'm here to speak on the newly approved budget. I used to think finance was whack, but then I became treasurer of my frat and learned that a solid budget and good times go hand in hand. I went over your new budget with a fine-toothed brush, and it's pretty fire, but I believe you guys missed some stuff. One, we need citywide Wi-Fi. Daddy usage has strained the relation with my parents. Two, more public places to work out. Doesn't have to be a squat rack or anything, just more bars. New York has this thing called scaffolding for pull-ups. It's pretty tight. Three, an anti-carbohydrate campaign similar to the DARE program. Four, more Coachellas. There's 50 other weekends in a year. Let's use them right. Five, my green initiative. Everyone gets a beer bong. Red solo cups are destroying our oceans. Six, a 12-foot-tall steel statue of Paul Walker. Estimated cost a mere $50,000 to $500,000. Thank you.
What up, council? My name is JT Parr. Chad didn't have time to say all the things we care about. These things should also be in the budget. Seven, streets where you can drag race legally and more safely. In a country called Germany, they have a road called the Autobahn where you're allowed to haul. We could have the fast freeway. Imagine listening to "My Hero" by the Foo Fighters without a speed limit. Eight, wave pools for inlanders. I'm a huge believer in the restorative nature of strongly-moving water. Nine, lightsaber research and development. I think they're inspiring, and I'm not alone. On another note, hoverboards, but hoverboards that actually hover. Ten, free oysters on Valentine's Day. They're an aphrodisiac. Let's encourage citywide romance. Eleven, repeal all no-shirts, no-shoes discrimination policies. We should all be able to walk around shirtless. Thank you.
Let me call up Mr. Walsh, John Walsh. John Walsh, you have items 1, 6, 7, 8, 9, 10, 11, 12, 13, and general public comments. So if we could call up Mr. Walsh.
Yes, Mr. England?
I'd like to make a motion to extend the previous speaker's time.
John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org, J. Walsh Confidential. As far as these items on the agenda are concerned, number one, these are California street items have been held. Number six, establish hearing date for the maintenance of the Heritage Avenue. These are unimportant issues. They spend lots of time on unimportant issues and very little time in front of the public on important issues. Okay, hearing date for the lighting... It's my first time to be here, although I lived in the United States as a student in the Midwest, where I did, I studied law at the Institute of Wisconsin in Madison. So humbled to be in your beautiful city. Thank you so much.
We're so happy to have you. Let's give him another round of applause.
Thank you, Ambassador, and on behalf of the four million citizens in the city of Los Angeles and fifteen members on this council, we'd like to present you with the certificate of welcome.
Okay, so sergeants, if you could clear the center aisle, I'm gonna start off with a little bit of general public comment. I'm gonna ask Chad and JT to come forward. It has been a while since we have seen you. Go ahead.
What up, council? My name is Chad Kroger. I'm here to speak on the newly approved budget. I used to think finance was whack, but then I became treasurer of my frat and learned that a solid budget and good times go hand in hand. I went over your new budget with a fine-toothed brush, and it's pretty fire, but I believe you guys missed some stuff. One, we need citywide Wi-Fi. Daddy usage has strained the relation with my parents. Two, more public places to work out. Doesn't have to be a squat rack or anything, just more bars. New York has this thing called scaffolding for pull-ups. It's pretty tight. Three, an anti-carbohydrate campaign similar to the DARE program. Four, more Coachellas. There's fifty other weekends in a year. Let's use them right. Five, my green initiative. Everyone gets a beer bong. Red solo cups are destroying our oceans. Six, a twelve-foot-tall steel statue of Paul Walker. Estimated cost a mere fifty to five hundred thou. Thank you.
JT.
What up, council? My name is JT Parr. Chad didn't have time to say all the things we care about. These things should also be in the budget. Seven, streets where you can drag race legally and more safely. In a country called Germany, they have a road called the Autobomb where you're allowed to haul. We could have the fast freeway. Imagine listening to "My Hero" by the Foo Fighters without a speed limit. Eight, wave pools for inlanders. I'm a huge believer in the restorative nature of strongly moving water. Nine, lightsaber research and development. I think they're inspiring, and I'm not alone. On another note, hoverboards, but hoverboards that actually hover. Ten, free oysters on Valentine's Day. They're an aphrodisiac. Let's encourage citywide romance. Eleven, repeal all no shirts, no shoes discrimination policies. We should all be able to walk around shirtless. Thank you.
Let me call up Mr. Walsh, John Walsh. John Walsh, you have items one, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, and general public comment. So if we could call up Mr. Walsh.
Yes, Mr. Englander?
I'd like to make a motion to extend the previous speaker's time.
Okay.
John Walsh, HollywoodHighlands.org, J. Walsh Confidential. As far as these items on the agenda are concerned, number one, these are California street items have been held. Number six, established hearing date for the maintenance of the Heritage Avenue. These are unimportant issues. They spend lots of time on unimportant issues and very little time in front of the public on important issues. Okay, hearing date for the lighting district, you do a good job on lighting. When you do a good job, I don't say, I don't beat the folks, like other old white guys say it, I give you credit. Number seven, number eight, hearing date for the lighting, these are all lighting district BS. Now, before you had, during the Carbon Arc era, the lights went out all the time, and I was obsessed with getting our lights on. Once you switched, everything has been fine. Remember, when you do a good job, I get down on my knees and do the Lewinsky thing for you. And I don't get paid for it like some of these other people do. Okay, let's go to public comment.
Can we give him his one minute for general public comment?
Well, yesterday was a big day, and we won. We won means that Antonio Viragosa spent, what, fourteen million dollars worth of Jewish millionaire money? Boy, he's good at it. I mean, he gets down on his knees and those West Side gay Jews, they give him fourteen, fifteen million dollars. What did he come in? Fourth? He's absolutely out of control. But he got beaten, he got his ass whipped, and I'm telling you right now, I predicted it. Mr. Weezer heard me predict the fact that Antonio was going to lose and lose big. I'm telling you right now that the answer to everything is HollywoodHighlands.org. I don't need the full time.
Thank you very much, Mr. Walsh. Our next speaker is Patricia McAllister. Ms. McAllister, I want to remind you, you filled out cards for items number eleven, thirteen, and general public comment. Go ahead.
Okay, item eleven, you want to issue a multifamily housing revenue bond in the amount of thirty-one point three million to finance the new construction of a ninety-eight unit multifamily housing project known as McCattan Campus Senior Housing at one-one-one-eight North McCattan Place. Now, as we know, I've gone through all of this housing you're supposed to be building with HHH. I drive around, I have the addresses, and you're not doing a darn thing. Mitchell Farrell is the only one I've seen so far, and president of the council, Herb Weston, he is now working on a project on Vermont, Eighty-Eighth and Vermont. Other than that, we don't know what you're doing with all this money, but you're not building any housing. Even you, Madam Secretary, I drove to one of your places, you're not doing a darn thing, you're not building anything. Same thing with, now I want to speak to Karen Price. He's supposed to start in two thousand seventeen. I don't know what his problem is, but I do see his workers, which are Mexicans, pointing their fingers in his face all the time, telling him what to do. You better start building, young man. I say young, for a reason, okay? You're supposed to start in two, the first they said two sixteen.
Ms. McAllister, you can't address a particular council member, you gotta address the body.
Excuse me? I'm talking about Karen Price and his district. And he needs to start building. I keep driving by, he's got one on Figueroa, he's not doing a darn thing. People are still doing business there and everything else. Okay, now, about this area, I'm concerned with this AMI, the area of medium income that you're putting on these new developments for the poor, because then you're letting people in there who can make thirty, thirty-five, forty thousand dollars. You're eliminating the homeless. This money is for the homeless. It's not for the people making the so-called middle class. It's not for them. I don't even think we need this AMI in there. Skid Row, who's, Weezer, he's not doing a darn thing. He's talking about taking, what, thirty-eight million to do a building that's already there. You're just refurbishing. You're not building brand-new. What's going on in here? Now, my public comment, ma'am?
You have one minute, ma'am.
My public comment, Weezer, I'm just trying to show you, everybody, what they're doing here. He's right over there on Seventh and Wall. He's not building anything, but he's asked for thirty-eight million to take a warehouse and fix it up for housing. He wants ninety-one thousand dollars for each apartment. Now, you know they're gonna be small. The building is already there, the foundation is there. He won ninety-one thousand for each apartment. That is ridiculous. Now, where this money is going, all I can say, I'm from Chicago, I know the game, is going in somebody's pocket. Ninety-one thousand dollars? You're eating up the money with these scams. We want you to start building, young man, and you've got this AMI on Skid Row. That's Skid Row. This is, his name is Weezer, H-U-I-Z-A-R. If I catch any Mexicans and illegal aliens up in that housing, black people on Skid Row, ninety-nine percent of them are black, and they better be the ones occupying this housing on Skid Row. That's why you're not building right now, because it's black people. If you had these illegal alien Mexicans down there, you'd be building two years ago. I'm gonna stay on your rear ends, and congratulations to our Republican candidate who won, John Cox. Let's vote for him in November. Thank you.
Mr. Herman, one, six, seven, eight, nine, in fact, you're through thirteen, and then general public comment. Mr. Herman, come on.
How we decompress this situation, we Americans, is that we ask Paul Kaurian on item number six, why such recommendations by council without the approval of the public, meaning you and thee? Now, First Amendment allows us to speak on the matter as the intention of this ordinance, forty-two U.S.C., nineteen eighty-three, and in regards to the Heritage Avenue, Weddington Street, number three, dealing with Paul Martin Kaurian under license one-one-five-nine-five-three. Excuse me? And then going on to consideration on the other items that I signed up for, such as item eleven, C.D. Rue, nineteen seventy-five or nineteen seventy-six, motion whether issuing multifamily housing revenue bonds. Well, this is what I think about multifamily housing. In my opinion, thirty-one thousand dollars, no, I'm sorry, I can't read, thirty-one million dollars in multifamily housing, and yet, HHH, we have an eyesore, a population of people left on our streets to the regards of what our new governor has stated for the record. In addition to that, on item twelve, a street vacate, although it does say regarding a street vacation. There are no vacations in America, other than we take from the public a street and we remove relative amending prior council action. Got you, rookie. Got you, rookie. In addition to what I'm trying to speak out from my fucked-up mind regarding March twenty-eighth, twenty-eighteen, under council file number for the fucking record number zero-six-two-seven-six-four, don't fuck with my mind. Now, general public comment.
Give him his one minute, general public comment.
Well, now, when I was up in Van Nuys last Friday, and Nuri Martinez had her black dress on, I just wanted to thank her. I just wanted to-
No, 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 no. No, we have nothing to do with what, in fact, sergeants, remove Mr. Herman. Mr. City Attorney has absolutely nothing to do with the city's business.
That is correct.
In fact, have him removed from the facility.
He's disrupting the meeting.
He is continuing to disrupt. I want him removed, sergeants, and I want him removed now. Just go on, Herman.
And he's continuing to shout so that we can't continue our business.
Okay.
And he's continuing to shout.
He's continuing to, he's continuing to disrupt this, he's continuing to disrupt this council meeting. He's yelling, screaming, he's continuing.
He's shouting all the way out.
Okay, thank you. Okay, now, let's vote on items one, six, seven, eight, nine, ten, and twelve. Open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote. Mr. Englander.
Twelve ayes.
Thank you very much. I just wanted to call to the attention of some of the visitors here today in City Hall who haven't been here before, and welcome you to First Amendment and the freedom of speech. And we have some regulars that actually show up and put on this show, if you will, if you want to call it that, every single day and every single meeting. What's disturbing the most is that soldiers have lost their lives, have risked everything to provide us that freedom, and this is what some people do, to act out and take advantage of those freedoms that have been provided to us. But anyway, I wanted to welcome you all here, and I think you've gotten the full experience of what we put up with and put through every day, that there are just folks out there that desperately need some help, but we welcome you here anyway. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Martinez.
Thank you, Mr. Englander, for clarifying what public comment looks like on a Tuesday, Wednesday, and Friday here at City Hall. But, Mr. Weston, I wanted to recognize an amazing school from my district, Poly High School. We have fifteen students that are here this morning.
Where are they? Stand up.
Please stand up. They're here with their-
Yeah.
These fifteen students from Poly High School graduated last Thursday, so they're already graduating seniors, and they're here on vaca, and they're here on a field trip with their AP English teacher, Carmen Padilla. Ms. Padilla, thank you very much for bringing them. They took the metro link, I'm sorry, the metro line this morning, and they're basically tourists for the entire day. They're gonna check out all the great venues that we have here in downtown. They're gonna go to Grand Central Station, and you're gonna go to, you went to Union Station already, they're here for half a day at City Hall, just checking things out, being tourists. But I just wanted to note that every single one of them is college-bound, and they're going to Woodbury University, UCLA, CSUN, UC Santa Barbara, UC San Diego, and Cal State LA. So I want to give you all a big round of applause. You're making us proud in the northeast San Fernando Valley, and thank you very much for being here. Welcome to your Los Angeles City Hall. Thank you, Ms. Padilla.
All right, okay, why don't we, sergeants, I need you to remove that rope again. I'm gonna jump quickly to item thirteen. Lauren Chang, item thirteen, do we have Lauren, or Laura, Lauren? Lauren, are you here? Okay, then let's vote on item thirteen. On item thirteen, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
And, Mr. President, there's been a request to send item one forthwith.
So ordered. It's my understanding that on the closed-session item, that that was, went through the committee process, and we can handle that in open session, but I defer to you, Mr. City Attorney.
That's correct, Mr. President.
Okay, so, Mr. Clerk, would you like to read?
Very good, sir. For item fourteen, in the case entitled Tryon Properties Management LLC versus City of Los Angeles, there is a recommendation to dismiss the case with prejudice, to release any claim or cause of action that Tryon Properties Management LLC asserted or could have asserted in the pending litigation, and to waive all past due administrative and inspection fees, penalties, and interest thereon that are owed the city. Additionally, each party is to be responsible for its own attorney's fees and costs.
Okay, let's prepare to vote. Let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
And, Mr. Clerk, it's my understanding that on item eleven, an amendment has been circulated so that we can vote on that item?
Yes, sir.
Okay, on that item, let's, eleven, let's open the roll, close the roll, tabulate the vote.
Twelve ayes.
Okay, Antonio Ramirez, where's Ms. Ramirez? And I'm, I see you, Mr. Rue, I'm closing the multi-section of our public comment.
One moment, one moment.
And you have one general public comment card, so, Mr. Clerk and Mr. City Attorney, this will be the last general public comment card. Yes, Ms. Ramirez.
Thank you very much.
In fact, one second, Mr. Rue, number eleven, forthwith, yes.
Thank you. First of all, I am pissed off because you seem to always stick the agendas right before City Council meets on the morning at ten o'clock in the morning. I come here on the weekends to check on all the posted council meetings, and you have none of, no council posted for the following week. So again, I'm admonishing you. You've deprived us of the right, the life, the liberty to come here and express ourselves correctly and tell the world what is actually going on here. Having said that, ladies and gentlemen, we are too busy subsidizing these fucking goddamn wetbacks and gangbangers. We have America homeless, impoverished, living on the streets. I too live on the streets. I too am homeless. Why? Because I am too busy tackling these motherfucking gangbangers, the Mexican mafia, the Barra Salvatrucha, Norteños, Sureños, Diamond Streets, and Eighteenth Street. Who helps us? Nobody. Yet you got the fucking fags, the ACLU, and all the criminal organizations helping these wetbacks and gangbangers, but nobody helps legal, law-abiding citizens. Not one fucking-
Thank you, Ms. Ramirez, thank you. Okay, Ms. Ramirez, thank you. Your time is over. Okay, thank you, Mr. City Attorney, that closes general public comment. With that said, I'd like to recognize Mr. O'Farrell.
Mr. President, colleagues, I think it's time for a more uplifting message than the one we just heard.
Hear, hear.
Right?
All right. In fact, you know what, everybody, why don't we just, let's all do a round of applause, because we're just happy and we're alive. We're glad to have all of you with us.
All right, and we have our guests joining us and standing. Please, please join us. Colleagues, this year's theme for the Los Angeles River is, for River Day, is Visions of the River, Past, Present, and Future. And I'm joined with our colleague, Nuri Martinez, who, five years ago, made a very auspicious debut in the River Follies and has been part of the annual River Follies, five years in the running, and she'll introduce this year's installment, so, so welcome, Nuri. I want to thank our generous sponsors and special guests. They include SoCal Gas, Comcast NBC Universal, Friends of the Los Angeles River, Geo Syntec, Harvard Westlake, represented by Stacy Marble, who is here today. We have Studio Mielera and Associates with Mielera, and we have Warner Brothers. We're also joined today by the MRCA, represented by Chief Ranger Fernando Gomez and Sarah Rascón. And I want to give a special thanks to our, to our, my council colleagues for your continued support, and also to the office of Congressman Adam Schiff, represented by Pamela Marcello, and the office of Assemblywoman Laura Friedman, represented today by Seamus Garrity. I hope that everyone has had a chance to stop by the Bridge Gallery, there's a selfie wall, and get a photo with the sister rivers and the golden paddle backdrops that my ever creative staffers, William Ayala and David Conno, designed. Thank you, William and David, thank you. We also are very honored to have City Engineer Gary Lee Moore, thank you, Gary, and we have Deborah Weintraub here as well, many, many other important folks that, no doubt, I failed to mention. Five years ago, we initiated the inaugural LA River Day, which is one way of taking a formerly ad hoc approach to the Los Angeles River and trying to bring all of the dedicated advocates and experts together in one place. Just last week, we began our kayaking season in Elysian Valley and Sepulveda Basin. That will be extended through September thirtieth, and I hope everyone has a chance to go kayaking on the river. And we have had a chance to grow along with the hopes and dreams and actual realizations that we've enjoyed at the Los Angeles River all these years later. As it winds for fifty-one miles, thirty-two, nearly thirty-two of those miles within the city, the river's wants and needs are as disparate as are its champions and enthusiasts. It's with that in mind that I have actively pursued and advocated to create a dedicated revenue stream for the river, under the Enhanced Infrastructure Financing District Initiative, otherwise known as EIFDs. The state legislation allows to redirect increases in future- This state legislation allows to redirect increases in future property tax collections for a finite time in a very specific geographic area to advance the goals and projects of the district, which include habitat restoration, environmental restoration, brownfield remediation, and other improvements that involve infrastructure improvements. This fund will provide much-needed financial boost, a long-term, 45-year financial boost for what was once the channel, which has officially been recognized as a navigable waterway, and provide funding opportunities for affordable housing as well along, in these traditionally overlooked neighborhoods along its banks. And this work is simply, comes on the heels of a few generations now of advocacy and putting the building blocks in place by people like Louis McAdams and our, our former colleague, Ed Reyes, previous champions of the river and current champions of the river. I recently introduced a motion requesting a report on the next steps to introduce what's called the Resolution of Intention to Form the Public Financing Authority that will oversee this EIFD task. Colleagues, we are now at the precipice of triggering this critical funding source that will enable us to fulfill our collective vision at the river. And over up to a 45-year period, it will result in billions of dollars to be reinvested back into the river environment to address all of those issues that I mentioned. But today, we have so much to celebrate in our recent accomplishments. The city now has site control and is working on long and short-term improvements for the G2 Taylor Yards parcel in Cypress Park. Not a small accomplishment. I want to thank my staff for working so diligently on that, Christine Peters, David Hiron, Angelo Yanko, working with the city staff in MRCA and others to make that happen. We've established water quality protocols at the recreation zones. We're actively working to complete the LA Riverway, connecting Forest Lawn Drive to the San Fernando Valley, adding miles of public access for pedestrians, cyclists, and equestrians, all the way from the valley to the sea. So much is happening within the 52 total miles of the river through the county and Los Angeles. The county is working to update its master plan, the lower river, including the lower LA River portions, working on their footprint. And the city of LA is looking at the accomplishments we have made since adopting the 2007 LA River Revitalization Master Plan, which we celebrated its anniversary last year. All of these forces are aligned, and we are unified in our goals for a more sustainable and connected riverway as it winds through multiple municipalities and jurisdictions. All right, now to the fun stuff. I'd now like to welcome, representing the Los Angeles District of the United States Army Corps of Engineers, on behalf of Commander Colonel Gibbs, I'd like to introduce Major Scotty O'Tan, District Commander, from Army Corps of Engineers.
Mr. President, council members, ladies and gentlemen, it truly is an honor to be before you today. The Los Angeles District is extremely proud of the partnership we formed with the city of Los Angeles and other stakeholders to combine effective flood risk management, habitat restoration, and recreation in an urban area. We recognize the critical role we have in balancing our responsibilities among increasing and often competing interests. This effort is evident through our ongoing projects, like the Core Los Angeles River Ecosystem Restoration Project, which complements the City of Los Angeles River Revitalization Master Plan. In fact, this year, we reached a major milestone in our partnership with the city when we entered a cost-share agreement for the design of the project. We are expected to announce the design activities will begin this year. This project will help provide open space, increase habitat along the river, and provide interconnected trail system for recreation and physical fitness. The Los Angeles District took an important step a few summers ago by partnering with the city, the Los Angeles Conservation Corps, and the Mountains Recreation and Conservation Authority to permit a pilot, non-motorized boating program, in which participants took to the river in canoes and kayaks to explore and learn about the efforts to restore the river and encourage environmental stewardship. Today, the Paddle the LA River program is in its seventh year and it's continuing strong. We're also in the process of hiring, hiring park rangers. We expect to be those onboard this summer, and these park rangers will periodically patrol the river and work closely with local law enforcement to address various issues that may occur along the river. In closing, Winfield Scott was the Army Chaplain who first had the idea of turning the adversity of floodwaters into the advantage of enhanced lifestyle. He did this in Scottsdale, Arizona, and as a result of his vision, Indian Ben Walsh became an incredible success story. The Los Angeles River offers much of the same potential. With positive relationships among all the parties involved in the LA Ecosystem Restoration Project and adequate federal funding, the transformation of LA River from concrete-lined channel to something similar to Indian Ben Walsh is definitely a possibility. By working together to recreate, to recreate a similar outcome with the LA River, we will continue to build strong together. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you, Major O'Tan. I neglected to mention two other critical staff members of mine. One is Star Prasamian, who's been working on policy and the acquisition of parcel G2. Thank you, Star. And also Mary Rodriguez, who works on river issues in the field, and I think Mary is down here somewhere. So thank you so much. And also Hector Vega, Hector Vega also, from my Elysian Valley and Glassell Park Deputy is here. Thank you, Hector. All right, I mentioned our colleague, Nuri Martinez, her auspicious debut five years ago. A star was born. And I just can't go on and on about what a great actor you are, Nuri.
I miss my colleagues.
You know, it's like, you must have had method training or something. So I'd now like to ask Ms. Martinez to join me in introducing the fifth installment of the LA River Follies. Over the years, our collaborations have provided a humorous and irreverent look at the hard work and volunteerism who worked tirelessly to revitalize our river. Ms. Martinez.
Thank you very much. Thank you very much, colleagues. I just want to congratulate my friend, Mitchell Farrell, for his fantastic work on spreading awareness about the activities along the LA River and preserving them for future generations. I'm excited for the fifth Annual River Day, which celebrates the river and all its amazing resources it brings to us. The river is very special to Council District 6 because we are home to where it begins. The Sepulveda Basin and Lake Baboa is where the washes and the tributaries all meet to create the LA River. And all, and while the weather continues to heat up, the river offers families opportunities to explore their great outdoors together and stay cool. Local residents can kayak, can kay... Kayak. I'm excited about the, about the video. Residents can kayak up and down our local natural resources in the basin. In my district, open space is precious and very important, especially for those families who live in apartment buildings and surrounded by concrete. That is why I hope that every year, year after year, we can see more families enjoying the outdoors. There's countless of nonprofits in the valley who are organizing to work towards building open space along the, the river to be able to have more families enjoy it, but there's so much more to do. And we will continue to make sure that we build upon our bike and walkways along the river for everyone to enjoy them. So I look forward to future work with you, Mr. O'Farrell, to improve our, our river opportunities and work together from the valley to your district. And colleagues, with no more further ado, the moment that you have all been waiting for, I would like to introduce the fifth installment of the LA River Follies Video Tribute. Here we go.
Hello, I'm former Councilmember Ed Reyes with the City of Los Angeles, District 1, Chairman of the River Committee. I want to thank you for all of your hard work throughout the years, to be able to see Councilman Mitch O'Farrell continue this legacy of providing amazing, amazing asset and resource for our future, for our children. This is about water, it's about ecosystems, it's about being able to live all your life, our children deserve it. All of your hard work is making a difference, and it is now five years, the energy is there, the changes are happening. Now we are talking about how we make it available for everyone. It's a challenge, but it's a worthwhile fight to make sure we all are able to enjoy this great resource we call the Los Angeles River. Enjoy the video.
Action News reporter, Nuri Martinez, reporting live for Channel 35. It looks like someone's trespassing on the LA River in a giant pink flamingo.
Hmm, that hot pink, that's really my color.
The LAPD is in hot pursuit, and I'm sure it's a matter of time before our men and women of LAPD catch them.
There's a nexus between the mountains to the rivers in this region, and together we can compel dedication, conservation, and preservation efforts for the entire watershed.
I want a river that connects communities. El río está de todos. I want new developments to be oriented to the river.
I want the Taylor Yards G2 parcel to be a crown jewel for the LA River revitalization.
I want to bridge the gap between the neighborhoods of North Atwater and Griffith Park.
The river will be a beautiful location for families to gather, will be a canvas of green trees.
Young people from all over the city can come and play and experience wildlife and habitat.
A beautiful river with unlimited access that connects all 51 miles. I see people swimming in it, I see people playing in it, fishing, kayaking, picnicking, and I see the same community members from 20 years ago here today.
After we've gone down with jackhammers, we've cracked the concrete, water is flowing.
They say there used to be concrete around here. I don't believe it. It's beautiful.
A river with a surprise swoop of a blue heron whispers my worries away.
Herb Wesson. Steel head trout. Kayaking. Herb, Herb Wesson. Wesson. Wesson, it's always Wesson.
I just had the most amazing dream, and you were there, and you were there, and you were there, and...
Wake up, bitch!
Wake up, bitch!
Wake up, bitch!
Oh, 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 Farrell, scoping out some mid-century modern furniture and... Toodaloo! Wake up, Mitch!
Councilmember, it's time to go to River Day.
Oh, okay. I'll be right there.
Yay, thank you so much. The credits didn't roll, but I know Rory is back here, the filmmaker. Rory, where are you?
In the back.
There you go. Rory. And Christine Peters on my team had Creative Control. Christine? And it was a whole team that put that together. Thank you so much. So, now we get to the heroes section. Oh, and I didn't even thank Herb Wesson. Herb, you know what? You know that vision of you in a pink flamingo? That's not a vision that we can unsee. You know? You looked very comfortable, it was great. All right. So, what we like to do is we like to honor river heroes every year. First, I would like to honor a real defender, an advocate, and supporter, and booster of the Los Angeles River. We lost her last year. She passed away very suddenly, so this will be posthumous, and it was Karen Flores. Karen Flores, our first honoree, passed away in 2017, but her dedication and ferocity for connecting people and healing nature is how she identified her own personal Twitter feed. Karen began as a volunteer for Folar, until, like most stellar volunteers, she was offered a job in 2011 with, with Friends of the Los Angeles River. She was a constant presence at public hearings and council committees advocating for revitalized, restored, and wild LA River. Her friends are many. We dedicate the Defender of the LA River honor posthumously to Karen Flores, and I believe that Shelley Baklar is going to accept this in her memory.
Well, as you saw from the film, this river makes us do things we never thought we would, and we're happy to do it, whatever it takes to raise the awareness and to get people down there. And Karen was one of those people who came out of the blue when we really needed some help. That happened sometimes, too. Called and said, "I'll help you, how can I help you?" And, "Oh, well, come on in and we'll talk about it." And from that point on, she carried a torch more fiercely than anyone else I know, from coming to cleanups and loving this river. So it is with honor and sadness that I accept this award. I wish she could be here with us, but I'm so pleased that you've honored her and recognized her efforts on behalf of the LA River and the city. Thank you.
All right, and this year's Hero of the Los Angeles River, we're going to honor one of the unsung heroes of the Los Angeles River, whom I've known since 2002, and everyone knows this individual. In fact, in fact, you just heard her speak, and she didn't know she was getting this award, so Shelley, step forward. It is, after all, the Year of the Woman, yes?
Thank you.
All right, so Shelley just celebrated her 15th anniversary with Folar. Her easygoing nature and welcoming smile are just two of the things that come to mind when I think of Shelley. That and her command of all things river. I received an education schooling from Shelley Baklar on the Los Angeles River. I've learned, no, seriously, that and her command of all things river, her ability to go with the flow, always with the intent of achieving what is best for the Los Angeles River. Shelley, in particular, is an advocate for involving youth to become environmental stewards and champions of the river. Like all good advocates, Shelley knows we must always be training our replacements and start them young. I consider Shelley to be my river sister and cohort. I'm so proud to present you with the Golden Paddle, the first female honoree as Hero of the LA River, a long overdue recognition. Another round of applause for Shelley Baklar. All right, now to receive the annual River Day certificate, we're going to welcome back up to the podium, Major Scotty O'Tan, to accept the fifth annual River Day resolution. Major? Thank you so much, and I don't know if I mentioned Marissa Christensen, who is the Executive Director of Folar, right here with us. I think I neglected to mention you, but here you are with us the whole time. All right, colleagues, that completes it. The exhibitions are still in the rotunda. Please enjoy, learn more about the river, it's all there for you. And let's have a wonderful summer at the Los Angeles River. Thank you. We're doing a photo on the Spring Street steps.
Let's give them one more round of applause. Mitch, great job, Mr. O'Farrell. Great job. Oh, let's, Mr. Coretz, for an introduction?
Yes, thank you.
If we can, shh, we want to introduce you to some young people. Mr. Coretz?
Yes, so from Encino, we have students from Valley Beth Shalom Day School over in the back. Why don't you stand up?
Yeah, let's give them a round of applause. Welcome, guys, welcome. Jump up and down. Let's show the kids again. Jump, kids, jump. Show you're in shape. And tell your parents this will come on Channel 35. Mitchell, Englander is going to come out and jump with you guys. Finally, a group, Mr. Englander, you and I might be taller than. Okay, Mr. Clerk? What is before this council?
Mr. President, council has motions for posting and referral.
Okay, they are posted. They are referred. Announcements? Why don't we start out with an announcement from Mr. O'Farrell? Then I'm going to call on Mr. Harris Dawson to announce the Friday Pride. So, I want to recognize, and then Mr. Krikorian, if we could work your thing. And Mr. O'Farrell, we'll start off with you.
I just want to let everyone know that tomorrow, we're having a blood drive, a Red Cross Blood Drive, from at 9:00 here at City Hall. I believe it's in the fourth floor media room, if I'm not mistaken. Is that right? Okay, so, please, please give. And then tomorrow night, we're having an exhibit at the Hollywood Museum. And it's reel-to-reel portrayals and perceptions of gays in Hollywood. It's LGBT Heritage Month, as everyone knows. And if you can't make it tomorrow night to the reception, which it might be sold out at this point, but the exhibit will run for the summertime. And it's, we do it every year. DeeDee Dadigan, who is the founder and CEO of the museum, always has this annual display and always mixes it up with something current that's happening. It's just one of the many opportunities that the public can enjoy through LGBT Heritage Month in the summer. There's a superhero theme as well, and lots of really wonderful things of historic nature to see at the museum. So, I hope everyone can join in enjoying that incredible display at the Hollywood Museum there on Highland, just south of Hollywood Boulevard.
Thank you, Mr. O'Farrell. Mr. Harris Dawson?
Thank you so much, Mr. President. And thank you, Mr. O'Farrell, for bringing, announcing the event that you're helping to sponsor. I'm proud to rise today and announce that in South Los Angeles, for the second year in a row, we'll be having the Our Pride Event in the Crenshaw District. It's, I'm very proud to be able to announce this event because this is not something that we've done in South LA in a big way historically. And so, along with Council President Wesson, a host of other community-based organizations have come together to put on a pride event in our community, which I think is very, very important. We'll have honorees, we'll have live entertainment, we'll have vendors, we'll have artwork, we'll have a host of things. There in the Balden Hills Crenshaw Mall, we'll be outdoors, so it'll be a festival style. There'll be great food, great people, and just an embrace of the LGBT community in South Los Angeles. And I'm, again, very, very excited about it. It'll be this coming Friday, June 8th, 6:00. And we'll be there until about 9:30 at night. And so, it'll be a big party. One of the folks we're going to recognize is Jewel Thias Williams, who was the founder of the famous Jewel's Catch One on Pico Boulevard, one of the most famous LGBT African-American locations anywhere in the entire United States. That club was big in the 1970s and went until very, very recently. And so, we'll honor her and a host of other honorees. And we welcome the entire family and the entire community so we can let folks know that they're still a part of our community. We love them, we embrace them, and we demand that they be accepted as full members of the family. So, again, June 8th, 6:00, Balden Hills Crenshaw Plaza in the Sears Bowl.
You know, before I call on Mr. Bonin, I do want to say that it is an honor to host this event with you, Mr. Harris Dawson. Again, this is the second year that Marquise and I have done this. But in my staff meeting this Monday, as we were going over the various events, members got up and indicated that we were going to have this event on June 8th. And as I sat in my chair, I reflected back to a time when I was a young man and when you would watch television, they didn't even have black people on television. When you watched cowboy and Indian movies, the Indians were all white guys. And here we are, talking about gay pride, LGBT pride, our pride. And as we were talking about staff attending this event, one of my staff members got up and said, "Oh, I cannot make that our pride event because I'll be at the Dodgers game, the LA Dodgers game, which is having an our pride game." We have come an awful long way as a people. And we still have a long way to go. But I am just so proud of where we are and the direction that I think that we are headed in. But that is just an amazing thing to me because if you can see it, you can be it. And hopefully, we will come to a point where we'll just celebrate these things, just to celebrate them, not because we're trying to send a message, not because we're, you know, trying to make people believe it's important that everybody get an equal share of everything. So, anyway, I'm excited about this weekend and, again, excited about partnering with you. So, we ask all Angelinos to go out and attend these events over the next, this weekend. Mr. Bonin, to you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. President. And I'm looking forward to that event. I will be attending it as well, and I thank you both for doing it. I have a few different announcements to make. The first one is tomorrow night, Thursday, is the Mar Vista Art Walk on Our Great Street, Venice Boulevard in downtown Mar Vista. There will be food, there will be music, there will be plenty of art, there will be dancing, there'll be plenty of opportunities to engage and to see the new spirit and sense of community that's been emerging on Our Great Street. On Sunday, I want to remind folks that Sunday is the LGBT Pride Parade in West Hollywood and the Pride Festival. All are welcome for that. Also, on Saturday in Venice, on Rose Avenue, pretty much all day long, from 11:00 AM to 6:00 PM, is the first Venice Flower Fest, which is a Taste of Venice on Rose Avenue, which has really had a renaissance in the past few years. And everybody is invited to that. And finally, a week from today, next Wednesday night, we will be hosting an open house on our proposal for bridge housing in Venice at the former MTA lot on Main and Pacific and Sunset. And that open house will be held from 6:00 to 8:00 PM at Westminster Elementary School. And so, everybody who is interested in Venice or is interested in homelessness or in bridge housing is certainly invited to attend. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Blumenthal?
Well, I was just going to announce, this weekend, folks can join me tree planting in Winnetka, Saturday, June 9th. We're going to meet at James Jordan Middle School. We've got a whole lot of trees we're planting as a volunteer community effort, and we encourage everyone in the area to come and join us doing that.
Thank you. Why don't we all rise for adjourning motions? If we could all in the council chambers, please rise for adjourning motions. I am looking to my left side. I don't see any to my left. I'm looking to the right. I don't see any adjourning motions. Mr. Krikorian?
Mr. President, it's not exactly an adjourning moment, but I think in that this is the 50th anniversary of the assassination of Senator Robert Kennedy here in the city of Los Angeles. I do think that it's appropriate that we adjourn this meeting, perhaps with a moment of silence in memory of Robert Kennedy and his legacy that he left to the people of the United States.
I think it's very appropriate. So, why don't we have a moment of silence? Thank you all. And I have one adjourning motion. I would like to adjourn in the memory of a guy from La Merck Park named Hugh Anthony Dane. He was born in Arizona in 1942. At a young age, he came to the city of Los Angeles and members and to all of our staff that are here today. He chose to be a public servant, just like us. He had a tough job. He worked for the County of Los Angeles in social services for over 20 years, trying to do whatever he could to make someone else's life better. But he had this crazy, crazy dream that he could maybe become an actor. So, at the Inner City Cultural Center in Los Angeles, I think one of the first centers that tried to promote or give people of color the opportunity to get into the theater, that's where he honed his skills. And he never gave up. He kept trying, and he kept trying, and then he caught a few breaks. You might have known this guy. He was in The Fresh Prince of Bel-Air, Hanging with Mr. Cooper, Boy Meets World, Martin, Friends, Monk Girl meets World. He was in a Netflix movie. I'm trying to find a Netflix movie. I don't find it right now. But he was also in something called The Restraining Order, Joy Ride. But most importantly, he is known as Hank the Security Guard on the NBC series The Office. And it just shows that anything is possible. And he dreamed it, and he was a good actor. He was one of these guys where when he walked in the room, automatically, you just paid attention to him. And I did not know, until he passed, that he was the father of a young lady that I have known for over 30 years. She is the niece of my secretary, Sean, who has worked for me come July 1st for, I want to say, 31 years. This is her dad. And the family tells me that the only thing that he loved more than his Jaguar XJ, or is that Jaguar, XJ, was his family. He was married. His wife's name is Gail. He was a proud father of Dominique, the young lady I know, and Chris. He was a proud grandfather of Chaz, Sebastian, Hugh Maxwell, and Jamir. And he will be missed. Thank you, members, for joining me in adjourning in the memory of Hugh Anthony Dane. This meeting is adjourned.